The Cuyahoga County Committee of the Hall worked session for Thursday, March 21st, 2019, the first full day of spring will please come to order. And I would ask the clerk to call the hall.
Calling the hall, Ms. Stevens.
President.
Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Tuma?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown is absent at the moment. And Council President Brady?
Yeah.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. Has anybody signed in for public comment?
No, no one has signed in.
Okay. And we will move right into our main presentation for the day. Our ERP update from our consultant, Sig Buzens.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Happy spring.
Happy spring.
So today we'll talk certainly focused on the project we started with the county today. And I will be just not on.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I will be also talking about the importance of ensuring that we maintain pace of the project as we go forward. We, the team does, simply does not have any more room to kick the can down the road, push some things down the road. I mean, it's time to, it's time to really, really focus on that. So we'll be talking about that. So let's just.
Chairman, can I just? Yes, you may.
You just said maintain pace. We were told four days ago that pace has just gotten pushed back six months. Which pace are you talking about? Just why we want to make sure the pace we're talking about? The new pace that we were just given or?
Well, clearly, the team has not maintained pace.
Right.
Over the last two and a half years. So, so, you know, we're talking about the pace that must occur for the next six months in order to have the result by the end of the year so that you could start actually using the system in 2020.
Okay. I just wanted clarity because the last time you were talking to us, we had a different pace than what we were just told a couple of days ago.
That's correct.
Yes.
And Sig, to, to, to be very clear, I keep hearing about, we don't have any wiggle room. They're into the wiggle room. It's a $22 million project, and the administration keeps saying it's a $25 million project. It's a $22 million project with a $3 million contingency. They're spending the contingency to zero. So they're over. This is the first project since I've been elected and the initial council that we've even touched the contingency. So let's be clear. They're over. They're not, they're, 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 they've blown the budget. They're into the contingency.
Shall I continue? We are going to talk about that. We are going to talk about that.
I'll, I'll make a note that Ms. Brown is joining us shortly, and please proceed.
Okay. So let's just talk a little bit about their report. This is the, the opening page and what they talked about, and they said, okay, this is our overall progress. You know, so the percent complete for the overall progress was at 50%. Yes, it went down a little bit, but that's understandable. I agree with that, you know, that they added some work. They added some effort into the project which, which caused that to occur. The other thing I think we should pay attention to is, is that they said, oh, well, we're supposed to be 64% complete, and we're really 50. So they recognize that they're not on pace. They recognize they are behind. Now, the thing that did not occur very effectively in that session is they didn't really talk about, what are you going to do about that? Okay? So we need to, we need to make sure that, that, you know, some questions are asked and that, and that the team recognizes that they need to address that with mitigating activities and actions. I think they're aware of what those probably need to be, but I, you know, it makes sense to talk about them. Okay? And then, and then the fact that they're behind is not really the reason for the reschedule. So, and, and they clarified that as we went forward. I, I am absolutely overjoyed that they are now, there is now one single master project. We've been talking about it for a year. Finally got to that point in February. So that's great, and that's exactly what the team is doing. So now at least, anytime you see summarizations, anytime you see, you know, broad numbers, they're coming from the detailed plan, which is as it should be. Okay? So we don't have two different versions of those plans out there. So, so there is good news. There is good news. The general ledger started. That's great. And that includes the general ledger, the project activities or project costing, however you wish to view that, and flexible budgeting. Okay? It's launched. Yes, it's a little bit late, but it has, it is launched. So, so as we go forward here, we have a few things that they need to, they need to finish before they actually make that the book of record on, on April the 1st, and we'll talk about that. But that's good news. As we said before, there's a tremendous amount of complexity and tremendous amount of variability and tremendous number of combinations of work rules created by the mere fact that you, we have so many contracts, so many union contracts. So, so they've really done a good job with that. I mean, they've gone after it, they've addressed it, they, they've listed what all of March, pick a number, 3,200, somewhere in that vicinity, each of which had to be functionally examined, okay, prior to integrated systems testing. They're in the process of doing that, and that's coming along quite well. Okay? The, the, and if you recall, in December, we had this, this revelation that the budget solution was not going to work for the county. And so a different solution was, was found. That they're here, they're starting. I just talked with OBM yesterday. They are very pleased. I think part of it is because the product is very similar to what they're used to. So, but, but they're very pleased and it's moving forward quite well. And I think that's, that's good news. And they are still committing and saying that they're going to meet their May launch date of that, which, which is also positive. The third-party assessor, RSM, you know, has been, has done their accounts payable and procurement readiness assessment. The team has responded. They've clarified, they've resolved all those, and that's, again, a good thing, which means that at least from that perspective, they're ready to move on with integrated systems testing shortly for those. This is the same page that, that the team presented on Monday. Just wanted to give you an update. So the green check mark say, that stuff's ready. So we're, we're in great shape. The only things that are left to do, you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, we have the, if you're looking at the fact that March is the end of the first quarter, you've got three months of actual information that's been processed in the legacy environment. So that needs to be fed over to the new system. And that's going on as we speak. So that's going to, it looks like it's going to meet their, their expectation over the next two weeks.
Councilman Schron.
Question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have you ever seen a project where the chart of accounts wasn't even approved? And we still haven't approved it. We just were asked for approval of this at our last finance meeting. It's going to go forward and not get approved for another couple more weeks? That we would be this far along on doing the financial aspects of this org, of this organization, and we didn't, we didn't even have the chart of accounts for the last three months of what they're going to look like?
I can't speak to that other than, you know, my understanding is that, is that you do have a normal annual process where any changes to the chart of accounts are brought to you as, and that's part of the process, and this represents a change in the chart of accounts.
No, this is redoing the entire set of chart of accounts.
That's true.
It's not like we, we added another account for, you know, for, for a function.
That's true.
That's what you do when you, when you add one more.
That's true.
This is rewriting the entire chart of accounts, which is the feeder system to the entire financial system, what we're doing here. And we, we, we're not even being asked to approve it until next meeting.
Yeah. I mean. Typically, in implementations that I've experienced, I mean, that, you know, you do all of that very early in the project.
Yeah, like a couple of years ago.
Probably.
Yes.
Along that same line of thinking, we will have two sets of chart of accounts also. One that we're familiar with, and the one will be the new chart of accounts. Are, are you?
That's correct.
Okay. And how long would you expect that we should be using those two sets of charts of account?
The, the legacy environment has to stay in place. And now, Famous is the name of the product, okay? Has to stay in place as long as you are feeding payroll information from your legacy payroll system. So the legacy payroll system is going to continue to feed to the legacy accounting system for payroll expenses using the existing chart of accounts. And that will go on until you replace the payroll system, which now looks like the end of this year. And if that's the case, then all of that will have to continue to operate in order to provide that information to the book of record, which will be Lawson or the INFOR general ledger.
May I just follow?
Yes.
So does that cause more work? Or is it pretty automatic to be able to do both systems?
To the best of my knowledge, that's all been automated. In other words, there, there's a, there's a feed or an interface, however term you want to use, from Famous to the general, the new general ledger. And there is, in that interface, there is the mapping, the comparison of, and the movement of, from this account to this account type of thing. That's all being done automatically.
Even though it's automatic, though, I presume that the six-month delay on, on the payroll and workforce management system substantially lengthens the amount of time that we're sort of in this limbo in between where we're, we're partially live but not, not totally under the new system. Is that correct?
Sure. I mean, you know, the, the legacy payroll environment is the book of record for payroll for the next nine months.
Till the end of the year.
Yeah, till the end of the year.
Okay.
So.
I think, I think now that January first date for payroll and workforce management is the most important date there is because they've been telling us how advantageous it is to do it at the end of the year as opposed to any other time. And if we don't do it at the end of the year, we can't do it at the end of a year for another year or so.
And we should remind ourselves that actually it's not January 1. It's actually December, I think, 22nd or whatever, the first day of the payroll period that starts before January 1 because the pay occurs in January.
Good to know.
Yeah. So that will occur, that will occur before the holiday period.
Okay.
December 22nd or something like that. I forget the exact date.
Okay.
But we need to pay attention to that because that's when the time clocks come into play, and that's when people are actually capturing time. That becomes the big deal.
Okay.
Okay? So let's just, you know, kind of talk a little bit about, and I, and I'm using the term Lawson, you know, that's, that's the general ledger that INFOR acquired. I mean, that's, that's the company from many years ago, but, but anyway, so the INFOR general ledger or Lawson, you know, the intent is to have it be the book of record and in place going forward from April 1. So between now and the book of record decision, which is supposed to be April 1, there's, I think I mentioned it earlier, there are three months of actual data that's in the process right now of being formatted and loaded and translated and so forth. So it can be loaded and literally put into the new, to the new system so that on April 1, you actually have year-to-date information by account. Okay? The entire budget has already been loaded for 2019. So that's sitting out there already in, in the system, and it's been validated, ready to go. So going forward, there will continue to be, and I think we just talked about that, a monthly feed from the legacy general ledger to the new general ledger consisting of every transaction that was processed in Famous. Whether it's a spend transaction, whether it's a budget transaction, whether it's a project or grant, changes. Okay? And then you've had, got the revised chart of accounts that's on your, on your docket, which theoretically should occur as soon as possible.
Well, it should, it should pass next Tuesday, so, so.
Great.
As soon as it's signed, it would become immediately effective.
Excellent.
So hopefully next week, we can have that done.
And I think it's also important to note that, you know, Dennis, the, the current, excuse me, the current CFO is unavailable, and so it becomes important to understand exactly who's going to make the call. All right? And so my understanding is that the, the deputy CFO, who's the, in essence, interim CFO right now, and the director of OBM will be the two people who will make the call. All right?
And who's the interim CFO?
Angie.
Angie. Okay.
I don't know if she's actually gotten that title, but she's doing Dennis's work.
She's doing it.
Okay. So what's the outlook in terms of the, the, the team and what, what they see coming? And I think we've already heard this. I mean, there's going to be a major delay in order to successfully finish the project. The latest schedule says, you know, okay, we're going to end, but we're going to target the end of 2019. And at that point in time, you know, everybody here should be basically taking the position that, oh, that means that we now have ERP in, in place, operational, and in January of 2020, all the activity ought to be in that new system, and all the reports ought to be going on in that new system. And guess what? That's when you ought to start saying, well, okay, what benefits are we getting? All right? It's time for that. It's time for that. So, and that needs to be, you know, something that I think the council, you know, should say, okay, now you've, you've used it for a month. What's happening? What are you, what are you getting better? What's happening better? All right? So the estimated impact on delays, very important statement here, only appears to stay within the $25 million appropriation since it excludes charges for department staff. We're going to talk about that, but that's a large number. Project risks are basically restated the risks. I think it's a good thing that the team pays attention to the risks. I think it's a good thing that they, that they monitor them and, and that, but we need to remember that just extending this thing does not have the risks go away. Okay? Not only do they not go away, there's this possibility of some additional risks because as the project starts nearing its, the second half of its third year, you've got to wonder about burnout, people getting tired. All those things can happen. Now fortunately, some of the folks are taking the position, based on some conversations I've had, that they're trying to keep the, keep it moving forward, especially the work, work order man, workforce management people, focusing on the contracts and the contract work rules. They're, they're really pushing hard to try to keep things moving. And I think that's a good thing because in fact, what's going to have to happen, I'm back to my opening comments about weekly pace, if people start, you know, letting up on the accelerator, you know, work expands to meet the time available, things will slow down again if you're not careful. Okay?
There's a place in your report where you say it's very important that, that we be totally committed that nothing ever get more than one week behind schedule. And I think that's a very important principle.
Absolutely. And we'll talk about that some more in terms of, you know, the, the whole idea of tracking weekly, the whole, and, you know, and it, I think the team probably can do a lot of that, but, but the management of the county needs to ask. They need, you know, those weekly reports need to get out to everybody. Okay? And if they don't get out to everybody, at least a notification needs to go out to say, oh, by the way, the weekly report's on SharePoint. Go look at it. So that you can look at it and say, oh, they said they were going to finish that last week, and they haven't. Time to ask the question. And management, leadership needs to be monitoring and paying attention to that stuff on a weekly basis.
The one area that I observe where I think risks have been reduced is that I think they've straightened this out where, where before we had just small, pull and port and go-live events right on top of each other, happening almost simultaneously. And I think that the current plan has it pretty well spaced out over the next, next nine months. And I think it's, it's very important that we keep each of these items on schedule so that we can maintain that separation of events and, and focus on them one at a time. If you start getting some of them delayed so that the second and the third one is now scheduled to happen at the same time as the fourth and fifth one, well, then it's going to get harder. So, so we have to really maintain that current schedule where I think we do have them properly spaced out over the next several months.
The other, the second risk item I mentioned in here, and I, and I think the team is being very proactive about trying to mitigate this particular risk, but, but the risk you face when you start extending and things get longer and you start delaying a little more than you have been, you know, months instead of weeks, is you, you could lose your consultants. Okay? And there's corporate knowledge there, and at some point in time, you know, they're going to start rolling off. Okay? And so I think, you know, and we'll, we'll look at this. I mean, it's coming up. There's a, literally a plan that's been laid out that worked, worked out with INFOR so that we know, okay, how much of which people are we going to have in these, in these additional months? That's a good thing. But we need to be aware.
Just so, just so you don't roll off.
That's, that's the whole idea. Keep the knowledge here as long as you can.
Councilman Schron.
I see we have the gentleman from INFOR here.
Yes.
Is, is he in a position to answer that specific question that you alluded to as far as the consultants and the, the team from INFOR, as far as do they have a scheduled roll-off of any of the people who are working specifically on this? And we would, I know how this happens sometimes. Somebody's already spoken for in October, November, December on another project.
Well, let's, let's ask the gentleman from INFOR to please come forward and, and see if you can respond to the question. Please introduce yourself and then see if you can answer the councilman's question.
Yeah. John Segunetti, the project director for INFOR. Councilman Schron, we have not identified any roll-off dates for our consultants except for after they've completed all of our obligations on the modules and phases, phases that they're assigned to work on.
Okay. So your, your folks were planning on staying, if they're working on the HR section, I mean, initially that was September, I think, is the latest launch. It's now a December launch. And your folks are prepared to stay through December, and God forbid, it should roll into a later, into a first, first quarter of calendar year 2020. Are they prepared to stay until, till you give us the keys?
They are still assigned and committed to this project, and they will be continuing to, to perform their duties and responsibilities until they go live, until we collectively go live with their, their modules. We will be scaling down the amount of time that they are actually traveling to and on-site here, but they will still be actively involved.
You anticipate my next question?
They're not, they're not being replaced. They're not being assigned to other projects, you know, at this time.
Yeah. My next question was, will they be here physically in Cleveland, Ohio, as opposed to assigned and living and working out of Poughkeepsie?
That's something we have to work out with.
Yeah.
With the administration because there's additional cost.
Of course.
That, that comes with this project extension.
Yeah. That's, that's, that, that, those were the unspoken words that I, I wanted to hear you actually say, that the possibility is that, yes, they will still stay assigned, but they might not physically be here at the time.
Right. Well, and, and if, if we are obligated on any basis to have them physically here, we have to deal with that as a, you know, part of the aspect of the change of this schedule.
And that's where the scope of the project will change, and that's where the dollars will change.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
I would just, that would take us, we've got about $180,000 left. So sir, you have about $180,000 to play with.
So let's talk about the, the progress of, of the project. Now, I've been doing this for, since December, you know, trying to show, you know, exactly what the team is reporting on a weekly basis. And I've talked about the fact that what you see here is a harbinger of what's coming. It's, it's the future. So when you start seeing a lot of yellow, it says, wait a minute, some things are happening. There's some issues going on there. It's not smooth sailing. Green is smooth sailing. When you start seeing an arrow that goes down, it says, wait a minute, you know, it's not as well, it's not as good as it was the prior week. So the team's paying attention to that, you know? But, you know, but it's concerning when you're, now, I, I think it's pleasantly a good piece of news when you look at core financials and you see it, it, you know, running along at yellows, you know, all that kind of thing, struggling, struggling in the beginning of the year, finding out didn't have data that, in the right formats, and, you know, didn't have validated information, you know, a lot of things were going on that pushed this thing. But finally, in last week, it's, the arrow goes up. Okay? That's, that's good. It's a harbinger, if you will, of what's happening, and, and the team recognizes it. What, you know, what surprised me is when I look at, if you look down here, payroll, I got the circle around payroll, and you'll see the arrow is down every week and it's yellow, and it's been that way for a long time. And when you look at the progress in terms of percent complete, it hasn't changed. And opposite are going, well, why in the last few weeks, since the team had already decided, I'm sure, several weeks ago, hey, we're going to replan this thing? Because we have to, and for all the other reasons we'll talk about, probably should have been showing this thing at red. Okay? And so that's why I asked the question. But this is an example of looking at this stuff on a weekly basis. All right? So what are some of the forewarnings that we can see in there? Core HR and benefits, as I think we all know, open enrollment occurred, and everybody is telling us that the system is in production. Yet we, in the weekly progress reports, we still see issues, and we, and we see this thing with a downward arrow, and we still see the yellow, and I'm going, I mean, if it's in production, why shouldn't we basically be going on to something else? I mean, I, yeah. I don't know. It seems to me like there are some things hanging on the periphery of the GHR and benefits implementation cycle that are dragging this thing out. And I'll show you some more about that in a little bit. So the excellent point I said earlier, GL is, is up, and so, and so that's great news. Payroll has been consistently integrating, indicating a progress. The down arrow for the past 10 weeks probably should have been read, at least for the last three or four. And then, you know, the change management piece appears green, but yet you, you heard Monday, we really need to do some work, and we need to focus on change management. So it probably shouldn't have been reported as green. So in, again, tracking pace, you'll look at this, and this is when I finally got a copy of the overall master plan, which is the single version of the truth, which is a good thing. This is the summary from that plan. That's what the team uses every week to report their progress. That's a good thing. This is what they use to, this, this came out of their report, what they use there, and they also use it in presenting to you on Monday, which is a good thing. But the things that start getting interesting is when you start looking at pace. Okay? You start looking at these percent completes, and you start wondering why they don't change. Okay? If you look at GHR benefits, you see that line underneath, benefits, vendor integration? Well, that's been the same percent complete since February. Now remember, GHR and benefits are supposed to be done and finished in December. So the question becomes, what's going on?
Last December.
Last December is when open enrollment finished, you know? And, and we had this conversation because there were, there were some interface files. Everybody's worried about sending data to the vendor, to the benefit vendors, vendor, benefit providers, and they weren't quite done, and they're, they're working on it. So does that mean they're still working on it? I don't know. They're not doing anything. I mean, or if somebody's not posting it, something's not right. Something's not right. Seems to me like this is an example of, if you pay attention to the pace, if you pay attention to everything on a weekly basis, and if management asks the tough questions... asks the tough questions, you know, then we're going to get the pace moving.
Well, what are, what are the main things that should happen in the next month that would indicate that we're on pace?
In the detail, in the detailed plan, they are posting every week, as they should, changes to their percent complete. That's what they should be doing. And they're doing that. Okay? But that means that as you have that weekly report, that weekly report should be saying, this is what we did last week, this is what we're going to do next week. Okay? And the follow-up immediately becomes, again, leadership questions, looking at that report and saying, you said you were going to do that. Okay? Why not? What are you going to do, what are you going to do about it? A couple of times, now, this is an anecdotal type of statement. I have attended work stream meetings, and somebody will make the statement, oh, well, we need to, we need to do that, and we'll follow up, and we'll do that next week. And then when you go to next week's meeting, guess what happens? Well, we didn't quite get that done. We'll do that next week. And it starts getting, that's kicking the can down the road. And if people's feet are not held to the fire, that continues. That continues. It's the easy way out. Well, we'll take care of it next week. Because people are not looking at that stuff. They're not monitoring. They're not asking the tough questions. Like, what are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it in order to fix it by next week? And then next week, you say, what have you done? Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
And I think it's concerning that if you look at the report from the 8th of March compared to the report from the 15th of March, none of the percentage complete numbers have changed.
Exactly.
There should be positive movement every week.
Yes, there should.
We only have like 30 or 40 weeks till the first of the year.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Yeah. Yes.
Zig, you're presenting they have to hold their feet to the fire. Who ultimately is supposed to hold the team's feet to the fire?
Well, you've got project managers.
No, it should be one person, right?
There is. Okay. You've got project managers over the two major areas. All right? So they're theoretically monitoring, working, tasking, assigning, holding staff's feet to the fire. Okay? I know for a fact, I'm absolutely confident that from the INFOR perspective, that's going on. That's going on. I mean, they-
So where's our, where's our problem?
We've talked about this before. I mean, you know, you've got a project director who is overloaded, doesn't have enough time to be putting in on this project. I think there needs to be somebody that's on this thing full-time.
Which we suggest, I suggested personally over a year and a half ago.
Well, it hasn't happened.
And I know that. And now these people are using excuses. I see the building of excuses up here. Burnout, getting tired, getting disassociated with the project itself. I don't blame these people. We're getting tired, we're getting burnt out, and we're not even part of it. So, you know, it just seems to me it's time for some clarity. It's, there's a problem here. We need to know who the problem is, or what the problems are, and the individuals running those areas that are stopping this. You just stated, it's not INFOR. It's in-house. We all know they should have hired a project manager, because that person would be standing right next to you. The project manager in-house is not standing next to you. So who's the problem, Zig?
Well, like I say, you know, certainly, certainly the leadership at the very top position.
And that is?
That's the person who said he was the, he was the one.
And his name?
It was the interim chief information officer.
Ms. or Mr.?
Mr. Michael. Mine just went blank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's, that's all I needed to hear.
There's a caveat to that, and there's something else to add to that. And that is that, I think, and I've talked about this in a prior report as well, which is, the executive steering committee needs to be more proactive. The executive steering committee as a committee needs to be guiding and steering rather than administering and receiving reports, which is what's happening. I mean, for the last few, six months or so, you know, DOIT presents reports, and the steering committee, you know, very few times do I hear them ask tough questions like, what are you going to do about it? Type of thing, which is-
Mr. Chair.
Which probably should occur.
The whole purpose of trying to get somebody from the outside would have that person be able to ask those questions and push. If you have somebody inside, they could be friends, they're associates, they're not going to push as hard. We've always, we're behind. We're behind monetarily. We're behind time-wise. And I don't want to beat a dead horse. But we, as the chairman wants to know, we all want to get to the finish line. And as Mr. Schron has pointed out, that's going to move again, probably. We're prepared for that. And I just see with what you're, you're setting up excuses for these people. We don't need that. We just need this project to be done. We're tired. This is expensive. This has not been run well. This has not been managed well. The recommendations of this committee would have been fantastic had they been accepted by the administration. They chose not to. What I heard last week about the IT department disturbs me beyond what I've heard so far in my tenure here. It makes the mind wander. So I'm asking you for, for what we need to do, what the team needs to do to go forward. Would it be the time now to bring in a consultant to take this on? Because I don't want the guy at the top to come in here and say he's burned out.
We actually talked about this a couple of months ago. And at that time, I urged the administration to bring in a, in essence, a full-time project director, professional. And I even suggested that your current, you can accomplish this by bringing in a person from your current TPA organization, because you have a contract with them. So it's a change order. I even suggested about how much time and what kind of money would be involved, because it's going to be an increase in dollars, clearly. But, yes, you know, I've always said there needs to be a single leader. We, you know, we need to be able to offset the fact that we've got a lot of silo leadership and management going on, the whole idea of fiscal, HR, you know, public works, you know, silos, need to be brought together. Okay? Need to make sure that we've got interfaces that cross those silos effectively and appropriately handled. Need to have a traffic cop. Need to have somebody with a bullwhip. I, you know, I mean, who asks the tough questions on a weekly basis, who has a meeting every week with those project managers and calls a spade a spade? I mean, that's exactly what needs to happen. But that, but, you know, the current person just simply doesn't have enough time to do that. Just does it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could throw the chair. So you indicated you had a conversation with the administration. Who did you, who did you speak with regarding this?
The, the chair of the executive steering committee.
Okay. And what was his response?
We'll look into it. And I think, you know-
So just, so the chair being whom, just-
Matt.
Okay.
The thing we need to recognize is that everybody on that team is, and we're going to talk about the dollars here, but everybody on that team is of the opinion that they only had 830 or 950,000 dollars, you know, 950 left.
Yeah, because they don't, because they're not, because they're not using the money the way they're supposed to be using the money.
And now, now it's going to be used virtually, completely for the INFOR change order.
We can sit here in March of 2019 here, and I mean, I think I'm going to see you next March. I mean, I hope I'm wrong. I don't see, I don't see how, you know, this is like, we do this every couple of weeks. You come in, you make these recommendations, which seem very valid and, you know, very legitimate recommendation. It seems like when you're talking to the administration, they just say, oh, yeah, thank you very much. You know, and eventually, I mean, the progress is happening slowly, but I mean, it's too slow, and it too much of a cost. I just, I just have very little faith in the leadership of this project right now. And maybe like, like my colleague recommended, maybe it's time to get a professional involved. It's very late in the game to be doing that. And I really, that's what my hesitancy is.
I think the, the timing is okay, I would suggest to you, if you were to bring somebody in right now, because you're talking about, in essence, running a nine-month project. And they probably, you know, so you're not talking about a three-year project, you're talking about a nine-month project.
Now that we have a new schedule in place.
Exactly.
Now that we have a new schedule in place, do we have, do we have a plan in place as to what has to happen each week in order to, to get this done?
Reasonably. Now, in other words, this detailed plan has been worked on, and there's a lot of detail in there. I don't remember the exact number of line items, but it's significant, which means that the work has been broken down into pieces, a good portion of which are broken down into pieces that can be measured on a weekly basis, which is a good thing. I don't necessarily know if it's 100%, but that's something that can be adjusted and can be worked on, and you can add more detail to a plan. And certainly that's one of the things that I would suggest doing, you know, over the next few weeks is to add more detail so that I have, I have weekly cutoffs, weekly milestones type of thing. And as soon as you've got that, you can start using it. Does that make sense?
It does. That's important. Councilman Schron.
Zig, this is not your first rodeo. And as a result-
I've had a few.
Yeah, your hair can tell you the fact you, and this probably is not the first time you've made this suggestion, either a change or putting somebody in. These are massive projects. But we made the recommendation a year and a half ago. You made it three months ago. It hasn't been here too. Let's assume that they, that somebody at the administration, there's only one person, ultimately, this is going to fall on their desk. It's not, it's not the project manager. It's one chair above that. So let's assume that they buy into the recommendations that we've given them, you've given them. That's probably a two or three-month action item before that, before you find the right person?
No.
Maybe two months, I'll get, I'll go-
If you, if you were to go to your current TPA, which is a professional consulting organization who have professional project manager capable people, you know, and the person that you get doesn't have to know anything about the product, and they don't, it would be preferable that they understand public sector. Okay? But that's, the bottom line is, are they a good project director? And theoretically, you know, and the, your current TPA has got those kind of people. I would imagine that you could actually find someone and bring them in in less than two weeks.
But that means that you've taken, they didn't have anything else they were doing two weeks ago. They have to be rescheduled. You got to find, it's just hard for me to believe that somebody of that caliber is sitting around waiting for us to make this telephone call. They're doing something else with their time and energy, so you're going to have to find-
That may be true, but they've got a lot of people. I mean, you know.
Okay. Regardless of how fast we can get somebody on board, are they going to believe 100% of this schedule as it's written on this piece of paper that hasn't been quality scheduling as far as adherence to it for the last two or three years? If you're handing me this schedule saying, carry the schedule out, if I'm that new person, I'm going to be suspect. I want to make sure that you're not asking me to do something that's not physically capable of being done.
No question. But your TPA organization has access and already knows about these plans.
Yeah. But they're going to, they're going to challenge these dates as to whether they're good dates, because you're holding that person's feet to the fire.
Sure, sure.
Okay, got to move on.
Okay. I did the same thing here with the, with the bars. And again, trying to say that, when you start looking at this bars, I've continually said, you've got to pay attention to what your current date is on that bar, and then what is the relative position on that bar? So you start looking at things as to, did they start when they said they were going to start? Or are you, are you looking at something that says 0% complete, and you're already a month into the bar? I mean, that means you're late. You're late by a month. And that's, there's some of that going on here. Okay? So I've talked before about the tipping points, and we had two tipping points, and then this is, this is our third tipping point. And the bottom line is the project has tipped, right? This is the same chart that you've seen from the team. It focuses on the fiscal piece, just trying to show you how much things have changed. Okay? Just basically saying, so you've gone from an October position, and then we were talking, and then there we were talking about a January position, and then general ledger goes to now, to April 1, and you know, and now, of course, we've got the rest of it. So, so, so the rationalization, there's two major pieces that are being pushed. Okay? The first piece is accounts payable, procurement, and treasury. That's being pushed, and it's being pushed because, you know, because the general ledger stretched out, then that pushes the subsidiary ledgers. And also that you've got a lot more people involved now, and I think they weren't really ready for, oh, we've got to train 600 people on how to do purchase requisitions and how to receive transactions and so forth. So that's the rationalization. I think we've heard before, the high-risk, WFM and payroll is very high-risk, and that it needs to have data from GHR. That's pushing it. Okay? So that's the rationalization. So the near-term launches, you can see that, you know, the launches that were supposed to be in May, June are now getting pushed out. The June, July are being pushed out. And July was being held for payroll and WFM, and now that's being pushed in the year. So the main reason for this near-term launch, which was accounts payable, procurement, mainly those two, this was the chart that was presented. And I just simply wanted to highlight for you the reason why this chart is talking about complexity. Yes, there's a lot of boxes, but there's also a lot of lines and arrows. Okay? And that's the place where this system and everything going on with this system has struggled with for the last year. As soon as you have a line or an arrow, it's an interface. It's a touch point. It's moving data from one place to another. The quality of the data coming from one place going to the new place is not good. That's where a lot, almost all of these things have been going on for the last year. Okay? That's why you need to pay attention to it. Need to pay attention to it. So why defer? I think we've already said all that, and I'm just kind of repeating it for your sake. Just then, I want to get to this, this WFM payroll launch that's also being pushed. Okay? And then this is the chart, this is the chart that the team presented on Monday. And I just wanted to highlight some things for you. The yellow, okay? Yeah, they're moving forward with this GHR refresh, which is cleaning up the organization's structure, cleaning up supervisory roles, cleaning up the data, making sure we fill in fields that are missing and are empty, and all that stuff is part of GHR refresh, which is a new sub-project. And this is the detailed plan for that new project. But I just wanted to highlight for you, I mean, they've recognized that yellow is where I've got these touch points. I've got, remember those arrows? Okay? Those arrows are coming into play. Well, here, here are the intermediate milestones. And so sometimes there's a tendency, and I'm back to this weekly pace conversation. If you don't pay attention to these interim milestones, and you don't realize that, oh, on 4-1, something's supposed to happen. That's only, what is it? Week and a half away? No, I mean, if we don't pay attention to that, they're going to miss it. They're going to miss that date. And as soon as you don't, as soon as you don't make that date, then everything else starts getting affected. So that's why I'm really big on this pace and weekly, because there they are. Those are examples of what's coming up for GHR refresh, and that feeds information for testing WFM and payroll. So here's the plan, and just the impact of that refresh, I just wanted to show that, you know, the refresh overall- So here's the plan, and just the impact of that refresh, I just wanted to show that, you know, the, the refresh overall completes January, July 1. That's what's pushing WFM payroll, because they were supposed to go live, which meant that testing had to occur before then. Makes sense? So that's what's pushing that out. Um, so just to highlight, this again is from the team, and, and they're basically saying, WFM testing is coming along fine, but there are three weeks off schedule, okay? Three weeks off schedule, but the question is, what's their pace going forward? Are you gonna stay three weeks off schedule, or are you gonna pick it up? Procurement, everything's coming along fine, they're testing things fine, but oops, all of a sudden, we get a hiccup. And the hiccup is, well, we gotta fix something because we got, sound familiar now? We gotta get a feed or a data coming from another system, and that, that's, we have a hiccup. We have something that's not working. So work order system, you know, you have, in order to finish testing, you gotta be able to test the fact that you're gonna receive purchase requisitions from the work order system, okay? So what their recommended approach, I just wanted to show you these to you. The team did go through the effort of correcting these pages that came up Monday as having some anomalies. So these are just simply here for you to see that they did update those. I presume they're gonna send those out to you. So these are the pages that they updated, and then Councilman, uh, person, Schron, you can, remember you were talking about the, the graph? Well, they fixed the graph, I mean, but it tells, it tells a better story for them, I mean, so. Uh, and then.
It tells it wasn't a typo, is what it tells you. We were told it was a typo, and then the graph would not show a typo like that.
So, so then the resulting reschedule, now, this is the same approach of coloring these very things. Just wanted you to show what actually changed, wanted you to see that they flip-flopped two groups, okay? So all of a sudden, the light blue is going from May 1st to October. So that got flip-flopped with the green over on the right-hand side, that's gonna come first. See how that's happening? So I just wanted you to see that that's going on. Couple of other things, you know, I broke out, I broke out the, the budget solution, so that's sort of the light, light blue box. That's not buried in, in the July, because they're really targeting the end, they say May. I just said, okay, fine, call that June 1, okay? Because when you say May, there's a tendency to go to the end of the month instead of the beginning of the month. Uh, and then, and then at the very far right, you know, they've, they've continually had this piece out here talking about rolling out budget to the departments, to the agencies, okay? It's really not part of the project, because the system's already in. So it's really kind of like, oh, we're starting to use the system. So I thought it would make more sense to not show that over there, and you'll notice I just put a yellow arrow down here and said, okay, we're gonna roll it out to the agencies in terms of using budget, the budget formulation system. Uh, and we're gonna do that throughout the last part of the year, which is when you do your budget planning. I mean, so it made sense. I wanted to remind everybody that, oh, don't forget, open enrollment comes at us again, again, in October, okay? Boy, we sure better have all those interfaces to all those, all those benefit providers done by then. Um, the dot, and the orange boxes are a lot of the, the, the remaining HR modules, a lot of which were supposedly finished in, at the end of 2018, but now all of a sudden, they're dragging out into the first quarter and second quarter. So I'm just trying to show that that's there, okay? And then down at the bottom is this, this data lake thing, which is, which is the way, sort of, how do we create a repository for all of our historical data as well as documents? Okay, let's talk about some dollars. Now, you've seen this chart before. And I've sort of continually tried to show you what the budget looks like, what the planned spend looks like for 2019. The red says, okay, now, they're, they're gonna make a just adjustment. They're gonna come back with some adjustments and some additional charges, uh, within FOR, and it's probably gonna flatten the line out, and so you're probably gonna be looking at a million dollars a month in these round numbers. I don't have the number clearly, but that's gonna be, that's sort of a, a projection on my part as to what it's gonna look like. As we've said several times, and I, I now, you know, you, you've got an interest in now, well, how is the team reconciling the deliverables every month with the fixed monthly charge from INFOR? So the team has been doing that reconciliation. They did November, they did December, I still haven't received January and February. So I, I have no idea where that stands. And also, clearly, this major shift of six months is going to affect those deliverable schedules. I mean, so they're going to have to make an adjustment, and that will come in the change order. So they'll, they'll lay out the deliverables by the, the delayed months, which they need to do, they need to do. But you know, the thing I'm seeing here, of course, is an awful lot of things got, got delayed from the first two months. You can start seeing that they're, they're, they're all of a sudden pushing out there. So what kind of adjustments potentially need to take place? And when I say this, OM, OBM is now working very closely with DOIT to literally assess and adjust the way the budget and the actuals, well, actuals you don't do anything about, but the way the budget is being, uh, included in the overall budget workbook for the project, okay? So there are certainly some potential contract additions. It's the systems integration, that's INFOR, I mean, that's the number that you saw Monday, the estimate that you saw Monday, okay? Which is about, I think it was 833,000. Main sale, which, which, you know, covers some of the IT folks and some of the, some of the backfill folks and so forth. I mean, they're, they're going, they need to be extended, okay? Now, my understanding is some of that may already be in the budget. I, I, I don't know, but at least conceptually, there's gonna be an increase there. RSM, if you go out and say, gee, we'd like you to do a little more, and that's your third-party assessor, if you ask them for a, a project director, you know, and you change order, then you've got an increase there as well. Um, and then there's always Zico Consulting, my contract runs out sometime. Internal charges, we've talked about this before. OBM feels very strongly that it needs to be included. I certainly think it needs to be included. And we'll talk about order of magnitude, what that number is in just a second, but that needs to be added. And certainly, there needs to be some proration of DOIT personnel from capital to operating, okay? Some contract removals, I mean, there's, there's some things in there that are infrastructure and enterprise-wide that on the surface would appear to me need to be operating expenses. Now, I've just gotten some updates, some of that stuff has already been taken into consideration. I don't have the final numbers on that, I just got those this morning. But needless to say, some of that, in theory, like, for instance, enterprise data architecture, I mean, that's, that's for the whole enterprise, that's not for ERP. ERP is first, but it's not all. And then you've got some contracts out there, SOLIX for data lake services. Again, that's for the entire enterprise. When I say the entire enterprise, that means it's looking at data for not only ERP, but also data associated with HHS and the justice environment, okay? Uh, and then the, the question of the INFOR's annual service charges. OBM thinks it should all be, uh, operating as opposed to capital. Uh, that's a big number. That means 1.5 million comes out every year, okay? So this is the projection of, of the staffing plan, I just wanted you to see that the team is doing this. I mean, it's a good thing, it's the right way to do it. I mean, that's what you have to do, uh, because you're, because you're spending a lot of money, I mean, for every one of those resources. Okay, let's talk about dollars. So every month, every month, DOIT maintains a budget spreadsheet. Has a lot of subsidiary, subsidiary sheets, and they total it all up in there, and they summarize it all up, and then you see that, you see that in their monthly report, okay? Now, they also, in, in there, they have a by-month spread, by-month of everyone, of every one of their detailed line items. Now, I haven't collapsed the detailed line items in here, just so we can get it on one page, okay? But I have looked at every detailed line item, and I have literally pulled the monthly data into the summary spreadsheet so that I can accumulate it into here. I did a double check and an audit against their numbers in tot, in total, and it's close. I'm not professing to be a perfect accountant, nor am I professing to be an auditor. But it's close for discussion purposes. So the bottom line, and I think we were talking earlier, you know, what, what is, what is the actual budget of this project? Whether you call it 22 million, or whether you call it 21.6? But you'll see, letter A there is pointing at, this is the original budget from 2016. That's the number, that's the column, that's what, what was, what was planned. Now, I will tell you this, that I went back and looked at the original, and the very original one for consulting services was for 11 million, plus some change. And there was zero for technical data warehouse. A few months later, 800 got moved down to technical data warehouse. So we didn't change the total, but we certainly reallocated. The other thing is, of course, interesting, is technical, technical development consulting was zero in terms of the original plan, okay? Now, we've got the, basically, actual spending through 2017, so that ended up being 3.5 million, 3.55 million. Actual spending for 2018 came out to 6.5 million. For the first two months, because this is as of the end of February, for the first two months, we've spent 4.4 million. Now, why did that jump up that large? We're, INFOR's charging a fixed fee of about a million dollars, okay? That's what, that's what drives that up very quickly, okay? Which, that number will come down. So then there's an estimate to complete. Now, the numbers that you saw, the numbers that you saw did not have the detail, did not roll the detail up. It just took the annual numbers and added them together. You saw, you saw actual to-date plus estimate to complete for 2019. I segregated it out so you could see it, all right? So the es, the estimate according to the budget as of the end of Fe, February, the estimate to complete was, uh, 4.4 million, okay? So clearly, you know, you're gonna get charged less from INFOR, as, you know, and that was, that's as they, as they indicated. So that, oh, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong column. Estimate to complete is 9.1 million. Are we, are we together? Okay. So, so the column there that says projected total is just simply adding the first two months, which is spend to-date plus 2019 estimate to complete, so I get 23.8 million, okay? So the budget before any adjustments and changes, expected spend is 23.8 million compared to the 21 million, and that's what you were saying earlier, Erdeger, Councilman Gallagher, they've, they've already overrun the original budget, okay? Then there's, there's a net column in here, because again, there's, I actually have three columns in there. One says, what are increases from the, um, delay? What are in, what are increases from, uh, charging departmental personnel? And then what are decreases from moving things into, um, operating expense, okay? And then I net those to get this number, all right? So, so let's talk a little bit about that. So given the original project budget was 21.6 million, before the latest replan, the project was over-budget by 2.2 million. We just saw that, right? And has been using the contingency of 3.4 million, we've been spending that money. Before the latest replan, the project was still projecting staying within the 25 million appropriation. But that's because the only number they're really talking about is the 833,000 against the balance that was laying in there at the end of February of the contingency. You with me? So the team's estimate for an INFOR change order of 83, 833,000 does not include several other items, less than 100,000 each, which, once included, takes the total up, right up to the 25 million dollars, which is not shown, but I, but I think you can see that. I mean, it's, you only had about, as, I think you were mentioning about 100-plus, 100 and some change. That gets eaten up right away, as soon as you say, well, we gotta increase RSM, we gotta increase this, we gotta, some other items are in there. And for instance, there's a 50, round number, $50,000 purchase of, of, uh, time clocks, it wasn't in there. So that's gotta be put in, okay? So for the major upward adjustment for inclusion of, of department staff, you know, this is everybody who's in a department who's working on this project. That means that they sat in brown paper design meetings, okay? That means that they validated data, that they cleaned up data, that they, that they reviewed and approved various activities throughout this project, that they participated in testing. These are all things that departmental staff were, were involved with. Okay, so for the major upward adjustment, just to get a number, just to get a number, I said, okay, let's estimate that 20 staff put in 10 hours a week for three years, and that their fully loaded rate per hour is $75 an hour, that includes benefits. That comes out to 2.25 million dollars. So if you don't delay and leave all the numbers exactly the same, you go over 25 million. If you do delay, you go over 25 million, okay?
You picked 40 hours and 10 hours a week, that comes out exactly to the 25% that we were told on Monday. Was that by accident, you picked that number? Uh, because we were told that, that nothing is gonna get reported unless it exceeds the 25%.
Well, first of all, you know, as I understand it, and, and I, and I think, you know, OBM has tried to clarify that, is that that was an example of, of how one might, um, estimate, how one might estimate. I did not take that, quite frankly, I was sitting there thinking, oh, yeah, I'm thinking of an average over three years. Um, and I said, 20 people seemed like a reasonable number, uh, and then I just said, well, it's a, a day a week, and then I bumped it up to 10. It just happened, it just happened to become.
You just happened to say 10 hours out of 40 weeks, a 40-hour week, which is 25%? And I didn't know whether that was by design or accident.
Sure.
Hi, Maggie Keenan, Office of Budget Management. I just want to clarify that the 25% was an example. So we, we have not decided that that's the threshold yet of what the number's gonna be, of who we capitalize and who we don't.
Director, while you're here, uh, it seems to me that the number that Zig is estimating might, might be operable for 2019, but, but I would doubt that that much staff has been used on, on the project for, for three, four years. Do you have an opinion about that?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I would respectfully disagree. The number of staff that are working on the project, more than 25% of their time, I think his number's low, and we talked about that yesterday. So we're, we're fine-tuning it, we're going department by department. But, um, we had 20 people working on this project three years ago. Maybe they weren't all devoting 10% of their time, but if you average the three years, for sure they were. And in 2019, we have more than 20 staff that are devoting significant portions of their time just to the project.
Okay, the disagreement doesn't have to be respectful. If I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, so be it.
Always respectful, but I do, I do believe it's slightly low, because also.
Thanks for clarifying.
$75 would be a low number, because now we're also talking about some higher-level staff. Our deputy fiscal officer is probably devoting more than half of her time, and she's certainly more than $50.
So the bottom line is, if anything, Zig's estimate of 2.25 million is light, if anything.
I think it's light, but I think it's a good estimate for conversation purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Gallagher.
The, the, the thing that I'm concerned with, with the example of 25%, we're, we're a public entity, and for an employee.
And for an employee to be helping pull an independent contractor over the line and not be counted in some fashion, I think is toe in the line of whether or not we're going to get in trouble here. So, I would suggest to the chairman that maybe we get an opinion from the prosecutor before things get out of hand as to what actually has to be counted or our independent auditor should be giving us an independent opinion so that we don't overstep and get into trouble. If, you know, I'm working in the courts and they have a contract with a copier company, something happens to the copier, and I'm ordered to fix that copier for two hours, there is, I don't even know if that's a gray area. I'm just saying, I said it Tuesday, I said, every minute should be counted. That a county employee is putting towards the contract of an independent contractor, get that contract done. I don't think we should underestimate that.
Mr. Director, are you in discussions with the internal auditors as to?
We are. So, that's what I was coming up to say, that it's not a prosecutor's opinion that we're going to seek, but it is internal audit. And we had met with internal audit last Friday, or last Monday, I think, which is where the 25%, he was like, let's just say it's 25%. But we are permitted to do estimates to not have to count for every particular hour. But we do have to do some pretty extensive due diligence at the outset to say, okay, look at your time sheets, and then we can come up with an estimate that we can justify. But we are seeking third party confirmation of what we propose to capitalize, absolutely.
And, Mr. Chair, as Mr. Shawn said Tuesday, the employees should be the ones notating what their hours were, not the directors. In the world in which we now find ourselves, you're doing the right thing, and I appreciate that. But I think power to the employees in this situation is important.
It would be the employees, absolutely, that are going to mark their time. Okay, sorry.
Director.
Wait, wait, you might as well stay here for the next question, the next question.
I'm in agreement with you that internal audit is the right place to consult on.
Because this would be an audit issue if we do it wrong.
While she's here, I'd like to address one item here. So, given these estimates, and I realize that they very well may be on the low end, so it's taking conservative view, you know, it's going to drive this thing over 25 million unless, unless there's further adjustment downward in prior allocations of cost. So, I think while you're here, we want to talk about the N4 contract of one point, that service charges of 1.4 million annually, and whether or not that should be capitalized.
So, the cost, once a module goes live, the costs associated with that module switch to the operating budget. Before we're alive, it can all be considered part of the capital project. So, for example, EAM went live, I don't even know, a while ago.
August.
Okay. So, any costs associated with EAM, including our own staff, we have staff that are solely, IT staff that are solely working on EAM, those should be going to the operating budget. So, we are looking at this now. We are going to be pulling a lot of expenses out of this budget that you've been seeing as part of the 25 million, and that's going to go to the operating budget. And then, we are going to be shifting some expenses from the operating budget into the capital budget. So, just as an example, a portion of my time rightfully probably should be in the capital budget because now I'm spending, you know, five hours a week or 10 hours a week or 50 hours a week working on the ERP project. So, there's going to be a pretty good swap going on. But, yeah, our guideline is, once it's live, then those costs go to the operating budget.
Thank you.
Director, how much money do you think is going to be added to the 2019 operating budget that currently is not budgeted for?
I'm just looking at his budget.
Do you want me to get the detail?
No, but I just, off the top, so it was a 400 for data warehouse on the 19. So, probably under a million, but close to a million.
Okay, well, that's somewhat manageable.
It's somewhat manageable, and also keep in mind that this is all general funds. So, it is a different, it's a different budget, it's a different how we capture those activities. But the ERP, though capital, is supported by the general fund.
There's, if I may, there's also an offset that we have maybe forgotten about. If you take, for discussion purposes, 2.25 million over the last three years and move it out of the operating budget and charge it to the capital project, then those operating budgets for those departments go down for that amount of money. Okay? So, there is an offset. There is not an offset in IT because all of IT was in the capital. All those people were in the capital project. We now need to start pulling some of that stuff out.
Well, there'll be some offset in IT because some portion, I'm sorry to correct you, but there should, respectfully disagree. There should, there would be some portion of IT costs, personnel costs that could have gone to the project. So, like Michael Young, you know, the staff that we've been paying for out of the operating budget, I think. But I don't think it's going to be, for the IT folks, I don't think it's going to be significant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please continue.
So, so, the spending bottom line, unless the county real allocates previous and upcoming expenditures that should be categorized as operating costs as opposed to capital cost, project will be unable to absorb the increased capitalization cost of including the work of the many department personnel who worked on the project for the past year and a half, thus driving total spending over the $25 million appropriation. Once you put that 2.25 million in there, you don't really have enough offsets unless you start moving costs from capital to operating. And, you know, we, she mentioned the example of EAM, which is the work order system. But remember, we've been talking also about HR and benefits. I mean, HR and benefits, you know, I asked N4 specifically, I said, what is the definition of a system being in production from N4's perspective? Because remember, N4 runs all this in the cloud. So, when they move, when the system is moved from development to the production environment in the cloud, it's in production. N4 treats it as if it's in production. N4 has its people respond and work with the county as if that's the production environment. Okay? So, those charges are operating, not production, not capital, because you're done. Well, I keep asking the question, is GHR and, you know, talent acquisition, is it in production? Is GHR in production? The answer is yes. Those are in the production world. So, but, you know, I'm not sure we're seeing the allocation of the people working with that or the N4 charges into operating.
Councilman Shawn? Just on your point as far as how N4 treats it versus how the county has to treat it, one set of accounting books can have it being treated as production because they considered it out there. The other side, I believe, could also still be considering it work in process because it, we're not, we're not, we don't, we're not paying anybody, we're not, we don't have anybody on that system. It doesn't go live. We were told it's not going to go live until December 22 of this year. So, to me, that's not operational until it's operational in our side of the shop. They might consider it on their side of the shop, but that's a whole, that's a whole different thing as far as their billings and internals and when they recognize the revenue and all those kind of things.
Sure, absolutely. But we've got to do this by module. Okay? You can't, you know, we're not doing it overall, we're doing it by module. And that's the way N4 treats it as well. So, EAM in production, okay? Work orders are being used out there. I mean, okay, open enrollment actually occurred. People actually logged in. I think you probably all did it, I would think, logged in. And, you know, and you did something with your addresses or your benefits and your choices of whether or not you just got a child or whatever. So, it occurred, it's in production. Okay? Talent acquisition. People are actually responding to job opportunities online using that module. It's actually going on. Ergo, it's in production. Okay? So, those three for sure, in my mind, ought to be treated that way, and they ought to be thought of that way. Now, in April, general ledger is the book of record. The N4 general ledger, project activities, and flexible budget are in production. Now, there may be some support time and some activities going on for a few weeks, but the bottom line is, at an absolute minimum, at the end of April, it's in production. It ought to be treated that way. And that means we ought to account for it that way, too. So.
I think if you can clarify for me, maybe I'm just tired. If we are in production and our county workers are using now the new system, and so we're calling that they are now operating, how is that different than what their job was before that they were using the old system? I mean, does one take the place of the other? Where is it that we are finding additional expenses if they're using the new launched modules instead of the old?
Well, you know, in the case, in the case of EAM work orders, because there wasn't one to begin with, that's very clearly understandable and very obvious that, you know, so they didn't have, their old manual procedures are not being conducted anymore.
Right. So, wouldn't that be just a swap of time? In fact, it would probably be more efficient?
Sure.
Okay, so why would that cost us more?
That one does not. And I think we've talked about the fact that, you know, work orders is, they've already, Public Works came out with a fairly extensive explanation of the benefits they're going to achieve and all that. And, you know, I think I mentioned to you that that's going to be easy, fairly easy to do because they don't have anything, therefore, the delta is much more obvious. And so, yeah, they probably, they are achieving, you know, improvements, and they're seeing that and they're reporting it, and that's great. The extra costs are, is a time cost for what's going on today because so many of the legacy environments are going to continue.
So, two systems.
Right, right. And, for instance, I know, I know the HR department is struggling, my word, is struggling with keeping the old and the new systems synchronized. New employees, employee retires, you know, that kind of stuff is going on. And so, that's, that's a struggle for them and because they're running out of time.
So, it's the dual systems that is costing us these operating costs?
Right. Now, on the general ledger side, you've got an automated connection there, we talked about that. So, I don't necessarily see a huge increase for the accounting department other than they've got to kind of check it out, you know? And then, you know, we have talked about, you know, I've talked with OBM about, well, you know, is OBM going to continue to kind of give you, because of the account number change, going to continue to give you reports that show both? So, there's some extra effort there because things are in transition. Does that make sense?
It does. Is that transition then until we finally get to the end of the year when hopefully everything is launched? How long are we anticipating two systems?
I think it's transit, the longest period from a transition perspective is payroll, timekeeping and payroll, clearly. You know, that's going to go through the rest of the year. Okay? The others, as you, as you start rolling out the replacements, that, you know, you're probably, you're not going to see as much of that. I mean, because the replacements will literally, I mean, literally be replacements. I mean, when you get the new purchasing system out there, you're not going to do anything with the old purchasing system. But you're able to feed that because the general ledger's in place. Now, you're able to take the new purchasing system and feed the data to the new general ledger.
So, perhaps if we're talking about the benefits of this ERP system, that we would be more efficient and maybe our costs would go down to make up for what it costs to transition over? Is that at all a possibility?
You're taking away my closing line on.
Oh, sorry. Well, at least I'm on task here.
But that's actually right, you know? So, when we get to my closing line, you will see that I basically say the time is now for the three chiefs to stand up and be counted and say, okay, we now know what our benefits are going to be because they have continually kind of pushed that off a little bit. And, yeah, but everybody knows enough about it now, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to.
Shall I continue?
Yes.
We've already heard the second point, which is, got to get that 1.5 million adjustment to balance off that increase. So, the outlook, you know, the project is on the downhill side. I mean, if Jack can use a mountains metaphor, I guess I'll use one, too. Okay? We're on the downhill side. Project has a good chance of completing and starting off 2020 with a new environment. I think it's got a good chance of doing that.
You do.
Okay? Unless, but unless, we've got to make sure we say this, significant reclassification of costs from capital operating is undertaken, the project will exceed the appropriation. Okay? So, you've got to, that's got to happen. And, I mean, I still, I think the project will make it okay. But you've got to be able to fund it. Okay? We've talked about this, I'm just kind of closing the loop here. We need weekly pacing. There is no more room for shifting targets and kicking the can down the road. Okay? County management should monitor the team's progress weekly and pay attention to the percent complete by line item in the single version of the truth. It's good that it's there, we've got people that are updating that stuff. Now, people need to be paying attention to it. Every effort should be made to assure that no single task goes beyond a week late. I realize that that's very black and white, I realize that that's harsh, but you've got to start somewhere. Okay? You've got to start somewhere.
I think that's what we, what we need right now. We've just got to be very, very intentional about that.
The weekly progress report should have wider distribution, including project team members and non-executive agency management. You know, there's a tendency for everybody in the team to think, well, we put it out on SharePoint, everybody can see it whenever they want to. Okay. But maybe what we should do is say, well, if you're going to do that, then at least put a notification out there and send an email out there and say, guess what, our weekly report's out there, and here's a highlight on the report. This is, this is an issue. Ah, you know, however you want to do that. And, because it seems to me like I've asked a few, a few members of the team, not all, and this is anecdotal, but I've asked a few members of the team, and, you know, they don't even, I said, have you seen the weekly report? And the answer is no. You know, I'm going, don't you think you ought to know? Don't you think you ought to, you know, I mean, I realize it's additional reading. You know? And then, same kind of question of non-executive agency personnel. For the next six months, this county is going to be affecting the entire county, the entire county, much more so than they have. Okay? So, you're now going to, all of a sudden, people have to be trained on how to do purchase requisitions. People have, you know, we've got to roll out, if you want, right now, it's kind of limited as to who puts job applications out on talent acquisition. Well, that's going to get rolled out. You know, so, all of that stuff starts getting rolled out. Remember, we were saying earlier, there are going to be 600 people that have to be trained from a procurement perspective? Because it's not just the purchasing department anymore. Okay? And, of course, time cards, right? Time clocks, which all have to be tested, you know? All those union regulate, I mean, union contract work, book rules all have to be tested. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. Okay? So, tell everybody, and if you distribute it more widely, there's going to be more opportunity for people to ask questions, as they should, which, of course, the team doesn't like to get questions. I mean, that's extra effort on their part. They don't want, they don't like to respond, I understand that. What do you, you know, what are you going to do about that? I didn't, I thought maybe it wasn't going to happen until next week, you know? Why is it this week? You know, whatever. To me, that's a good thing. So, let's talk about weekly pace for just a second. And this is at a high level, again, from an order of magnitude perspective. We start with a given, which is the overall percent complete as of 3/18 was 50%. You remember that number? It was on our very, the very first page. Okay? And that came from the overall, the master plan, which is a good thing. So, the weeks until WFM payroll launch is 40 weeks. And I'm backing it off, looking at 12/22 is when you've got to turn those clocks on. If work is somewhat evenly spread, and we know it's going to go up and down, but you've got to make some assumptions. but you've got to make some assumptions. If it's somewhat evenly spread, the team should be experiencing a 1% to 2% overall progress increment weekly.
Yes.
That 50 needs, next week, actually this week, that probably Friday, that report should say, should say 51 or 50.5 or 51.5 or something. It should move off of 50. And it has to happen or should happen every week at the overall summary level. I realize there's variations at the detail level, but that's what everybody should be looking at and they should be asking about it.
We're going to watch that number every week.
Okay. Each weekly report should identify action items and tasks from the prior week that have been completed, along with action items and tasks that must be completed in the coming week. Okay? The team has action logs and they have issues logs. They need to work those. They need to be part of what they look at every week because every one of them should have a target date and who's supposed to do it. It really becomes pretty easy. Hey, you were supposed to do that last week. How you doing? It's really easy, it, once you do that, once you break every, if you don't break it down by weekly efforts and subdivide everything into weeks, then all of a sudden you get in, you get into guesswork. If, if something is a, a 20-day task and you ask somebody how you doing and they say, wow, I'm 10% done. And if they say that in the third week, you're in trouble. Right? So, but if you say, well, wait a minute, you, you, all, you know, you can do, I, I've always done it with lists. If you have a list, it's easy. If you have a list, it's real easy. If you have a list of 10 things, you say, first two, week one. Next two, week, week two, you know what? That's easy. I, I mean, I, I realize I'm oversimplifying. So the outlook focus, the expected spend should be noted by the month it will be occurred, incurred, not the month paid. We've got, we've got some numbers that keep getting moved around because we're trying to focus on when they're paid as opposed to when they're incurred. An increased focus should be placed on communications and training. I think you heard that Monday. I agree wholeheartedly. There's so many more people involved now for the next six months. An increased focus should be placed on knowledge transfer from NFOR consultants to in-house personnel. DOIT wants to do a lot of this stuff in-house as they should. And there are pieces of the project that they're doing, but they're having problems getting enough staff. So then that needs to move forward and then, and, and of course, the other thing, now we're talking about the risk of it, as you extend this thing, are we going to keep all of our consultants? Okay, NFOR says, yep, you are. Great. I need the knowledge transfer. I need to make sure that, you know, that consultant, what that consultant knows, I need to make sure somebody knows that in-house.
Question, Ms. Caldwell.
Through the chair to Zig. So can you go back to the expected spend? Why, why is that important that it should be noted by the month it's incurred versus?
From a, from a cost management perspective, what you're trying to do is manage what's happening to the project. And if the cost occurs in, in a particular week or a month, then that ties directly to the effort. Okay? Let's use an example. I, I bill very currently, okay? Yet if you look at, if you look at 2018, I, I billed November and December, which was an indication that I was doing my job. I was doing work here, okay? Yet when we look at the actual budget worksheet, it says that I got paid in February. And so the amount of my activity was zero in November and December. So you, you see what I'm saying? So I'm not, all of a sudden, I'm not managing what's going on. I'm just, I'm, I'm tracking an accounts payable function is what I'm doing.
So this process has been done since the beginning?
Pretty much, I mean, pretty much, you know, like for instance, NFOR, NFOR bills on, in December for that 1.5 million, they ask to be paid in December because that's for the entire following year. And I showed you, you might have overlooked it, but there's, when I showed you the, the chart of, of dollars, expected spend for 2019, there's this huge number in January. Well, how'd that happen? Well, the 1.5 million literally got moved from, from December to January because that's when it was paid. We're moving our budgets around. How do you manage that? Does that make sense? Go on.
Yes.
And here is my closing line. Counselor, Mr. Baker. The three chiefs, Public Works, Fiscal and Human Resources, should be able to finally commit to more definitive benefits.
We've been asking questions as we go along, but I'm going to ask whether there's any further questions.
I, I have one, only because we are talking about watching now that each week we're 1% or 2% higher from the week before. In trying to look at the past performance and tracking the project pace, there have been times when it's gone from 8% to 22% from one week to the other. Is it reasonable to think that maybe there would be a couple of weeks at zero and then a jump to 5% or 6%? I mean, how specific do you think it is that it needs to be consistently 1% or 2% when maybe we may see that jump and not know it three weeks down the road?
Several things typically happen. Sometimes the individual who is actually posting it just simply doesn't get around to posting it. And, and that's because, you know, when you've got 5,000 line items, I mean, it gets complex. It's, it's, it's an administrative activity.
Okay.
And so that can happen. The other thing that can happen is that the tasks are not broken down on, on a week horizon basis. And so as soon as you have something longer than that week, you immediately get into, oh, well, you know, well, I'm not ready. I'm going to, I'm going to push that off to next week. I'm not, I, I didn't get anything done on it this week, but I'll get it all done next week. And so all of a sudden, you end up, somebody's saying, well, then you're saying it's zero this week.
Right.
And so that can happen. Only by breaking things down into weekly horizons are you able to say yes or no, done or not done, which makes it much easier than saying, well, I'm 25% done. You know, it's much easier. Let the system calculate all the totals, but the task should be done or not done. And then, then it's not an issue.
I would, I would add that there could be some pretty significant moves or lack of moves on, on the individual subcategories of which there's 20 or 30 listed there. But I think for the, the overall, the big number, the overall project, there really should be a fairly steady tracking of 1% to 2% per week. I, I really think that, that that's a reasonable expectation.
Exactly. And, and if, and if there's, there could be a rounding situation. So you need to, you know, maybe, maybe they need to, you know, provide an additional decimal position so that they, you see some motion. Because right now, in some cases, it literally doesn't look like there's been any movement. And, you know, there, maybe there is if they, if they had a decimal position. Because some movement is more important than none.
Well, in the, in the last week, there was no overall movement and there was no movement on any of the subcategories, you know? So, so that, for, for that week's report, it was just stuck.
And there have been times.
We want to, we want to see the, the overall percentage move and then we also want to see movement. There should at least be movement on several of the subcategories every week.
Yep, absolutely.
And Chair, if I may ask, too, licensing, we haven't really talked. That also will impact our 25 million, the licensing fees that are starting to, it seems that we've been approving, at least in Board of Control, some of the licensing that occur?
I, I don't think so. The, the only major piece that could, you, you could be hit with is whether, whether or not you're going to be, whether or not you'll be able to continue paying for your legacy hardware. And, you know, and whatever kind of deal you may have, that may be an issue, but that's, that's going to be 2020, okay? But the rest of that stuff is relatively small compared to the overall picture. I mean, so, yeah, you're going to see 15,000, 14,000, that sort of thing. The big piece will be, will be NFOR's. And then if you, if the administration says, okay, I'm going to talk to RSM and I'm going to get myself a project director, you know, you can, you can sit there and do a quick calculation of that and, you know, figure out, you know, what that might be, and that's going to be a little more sizable.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
A quality report as usual, but, but not as favorable as some that we've seen in the past. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that the administration will take your advice to heart and, and, and provide the kind of day-to-day and week-to-week close monitoring that we need to stay on the new schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, nothing further commands our attention, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for hanging in there.